Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the June 14th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. If you will please stand for a moment of silent prayer and then that's the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is the United States Army's birthday in 1775, 247 years ago. I guess some of you have seen the flags posted everywhere. I didn't realize what it was for until I was given the note. It also commemorates Flag Day. On this day in 1777, the Second Continental Congress set the design. There would be 13 alternating red and white and 13 stars, white in a blue field representing a new constellation. Flag Day was declared by President Wilson in 1916 but is not a legal public holiday, hence we are all here today. All right. We will have a public speaking session after each presentation for anybody who is here to speak on a particular agenda item. If there's anybody here that has something that's not on the agenda, you are welcome to fill out a card and come and speak. Does anybody have anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Righty. The first item is the abandonment of the Kelly Park Crossing Development Regional Impact.
Thank you. Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. Back in December, on December 21st, 2011, we had our first development of regional impact approved by the City Council, Planning Commission and City Council, and it takes place, it's actually in the north part of the city. I have a general map here to give you an idea. This is Kelly Park. It runs north of Kelly Park and then also south of Kelly Park. There were, there was another parcel right here that's owned by the wards that they actually pulled out, and as a result, they only connected this little pinpoint here. So it's kind of an odd development of regional impact. It was, it was developed in accordance with Florida statutes. Unfortunately, the developer that was originally putting all this together did not follow through with getting anybody to actually develop the property. And as a result, there were a number of items that were required to be done that were never done. There's also reporting that has to be done annually. They never filed any reports to the state. We never got to review any reports. There's about 13 property owners originally, and now I believe there's about seven or eight property owners. As a result of this, as you, as you know, this is also the hotspot for development in Apopka. This is the, a portion of the Kelly Park interchange. This is Kelly Park Crossings Development of Regional Impact. This is the center point here, and it goes out about as far as this for the interchange itself, and then it circles up to Onitch Road, over to the east, and then down to Appy Lane, which is just off of Plymouth-Sorrento Road on the eastern side. So it's a big concentric circle, one mile in diameter, and this DRI is a large portion of that. Because they did not follow through with what they were supposed to do, any of the development developers that are in this area, and they're going through the development stage, they're going through the site planning and school concurrency and mitigation and things like that, actually they haven't gotten that far because they can't really get any further until this abandonment is completed. So there are a certain number of vested rights that they do have. Number of units is only about 1,500. In the Kelly Park interchange, we have a little over 9,000 units that are, that are actually approved for this area. And the interchange itself also has about 10 million square foot of non-residential. That'll never happen because you just can't put that much development, but that's, that's how, that's how they assign the amount of development that could potentially come. But most of the way we designed the Kelly Park interchange, KPI, it's, there are, there are certain areas that can get up to 25 dwelling units per acre, which is just the center portion with the village center in this, in these areas on the east and west side of the interchange itself, and then it gradually goes out to 10 units and then five units, and then just outside is two dwelling units per acre. So far, we've had, we've got about eight different developments that are going through the approval process. A few of these you have seen come through for approvals, and of course, those are going on to City Council, but again, they can't do anything until once, until this DRI is vacated. About, I think it was a year, two years ago or a year ago, the Florida, Florida legislation basically nixed development of regional impacts. They could, at this stage, anybody could come in and do a development and not have to do a DRI anymore. So this is kind of a, it's a lame duck type of thing that is no longer needed in, in the city of Apopka and for the development of the KPI interchange area. So staff put together the report along with the maps that are part of your, part of the packet that you had, the legal descriptions and the total number of acres that, that is pulled up, pulled from the GIS from Orange County's property appraiser site. So what we are asking to do is to basically recommend abandonment of the DRI to City Council, and then City Council, we've got the schedule for tomorrow evening at 7:00, and then July 6th would be the second reading and adoption of the ordinance itself. At that point, then we record it and we send it up to the state and...
Every big revert's back.
Correct. Correct. I've had all the property owners basically emailing me or calling me over the last few weeks, "Are we still on schedule to get rid of this?" You know, they're, they're all, you know, very antsy to get, get, get this going or get this gone, I guess you'd say. So anyway, any other questions? I could, the legal part, obviously, Michael, Michael's the legal guy, and I'm just sending the message, you know?
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here that'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, close the public section and bring it back to the commission for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed abandonment of the Kelly Park Crossing Development of Regional Impact to be in the best interest of the city of Apopka, and the parcel owners to remain consistent with the Kelly Park Interchange Form Base Code, KPI-FBC.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Washington, a second by Commissioner Lrendo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Second item today will be amendment to ordinance number 2858, The Ridge Plan Development and Master Plan. Request approval of the amendment to ordinance, The Ridge Master Plan Development and Master Plan.
Good afternoon. Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the amendment to ordinance number 2858, The Ridge Plan Development and Master Plan. It is located north and south of Boy Scout Road, west of State Road 451, north of State Road 414, and west of State Road 429. On July 21st, 2021, the City Council approved ordinance number 2858, which approved the Plan Development Master Plan for mixed-use development comprising of commercial, industrial, and residential uses on approximately 366 acres. The applicant is now requesting to amend the ordinance to include the following changes on the master plan and development program and add three additional parcels, as well as noting the following. Parcel ID ending in 003 has been added to the overall PD boundary. Parcel is referred to as Parcel 9 and located north of Boy Scout Road. The resident, it is approximately 40.5 acres in size, and the residential development program proposed is for 44 single-family detached and town home dwelling units. Parcel ID ending in 047 has been added to the overall PD boundary as well. This parcel is added to Parcel 7, which increases Parcel 7 acreage from 2.8 acres to 3.5 acres. No increase to the approved development plan program for Parcel 7's being proposed. Parcel ID ending in 102 has been added to the overall PD boundary also. This parcel is added to Parcel 6, which increases Parcel 6 acreage from 28.74 acres to 28.8 acres. The development program for Parcel 6 has been revised to reduce the multifamily use from 378 dwelling units to 304 dwelling units. The remaining 74 multifamily units are transferred to Parcel 3. The PD Development Agreement Exhibit C, permitted uses, has also been updated to allow additional non-residential uses on Parcel 6. The previously approved deviation from Section 3.7.2 F1E, which refers to the maximum percentage of lots, 50, 50 feet in width or less, is updated to include also Parcel 9. Based on the addition of these three parcels, the total acreage of PD is now approximately 407 acres. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of The Ridge Plan Development Master Plan Amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Clarification, the Parcel 6 revised to reduce multifamily use and then to the D, to 304 DU, and then it says, the next line, the PD Development Exhibit C, permitted uses, is updated to allow non-residential uses on Parcel 6.
Correct. So it's designated as a mixed-use parcel, so it already has a non-residential uses permitted, aren't it? We were just, since the developer's agreement includes a list of specific permitted uses, we just wanted to include a couple of more.
I understand. Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else have questions of staff?
No, sir.
One of the things I wanted to mention real quick is the, in fact, CFX is actually putting, going to be putting in an interchange right off of 429 and Indian Road and that location, so that's one of the reasons why they wanted to amend and put in a couple of the uses that are more applicable to an interchange area. So it's, it just made sense.
Okay. All right. Does the applicant have a presentation?
No. Good evening. Erica Hughes with VHB. We agree with staff's recommendation. They've been great to work with, and we look forward to continue working with them as we come in with our development plan. So we're available for any questions if you have any.
Okay. Could you give me your name and address for the record?
Erica Hughes, VHB 225 East Robinson, Orlando, Florida, 32801.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone from the public that has any questions or would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I find, I move that we find the proposed amendment to The Ridge Planned Development PD consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and recommend approval of The Ridge Planned Development PD Master Plan Amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
A motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. Any further discussion? All right. Have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is quasi-judicial, so I will have to ask if any staff members had any ex parte communication on this matter.
No.
Very well. Subject is a special exception request to allow contractor's storage yard in the MUD Mixed Juice Downtown Zoning District, and they requested to approve the special exception for the same. The owner is AK Florida Real Estate LLC. The applicant is Arrival Live Traffic Control LLC, David Freeze.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This special exception is a request to allow contractor's storage yard use in the MUD Mixed Juice Downtown Zoning District. Property is located at 507 Marvin C. Xander's Avenue, the northeast corner of Marvin C. Xander's Avenue and MA Board Street. The subject property has a future land use designation of commercial and within the MUD zoning district. It's approximately 2.3 acres in size and has an existing industrial warehouse. The applicant intends to operate a contractor's storage yard, which requires a special exception in the MUD zoning district. Any repair of equipment shall be conducted within the enclosed building, and to the greatest, greatest extent practicable, the applicant is required to comply with all site design and other standards, including landscaping buffer, buffer yard requirements under the Land Development Code. The applicant is proposing a buffer yard that exceeds the 15-foot wide landscape buffer requirement along the perimeter of the storage, of the outdoor storage area. Per Land Development Code, Section 2.5.1G4, a special exception is required to comply with the, with these standards also outlined in the staff report. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to approve the special exception to allow contractor's storage yard use within the MUD zoning district, subject to the exhibits and findings of the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
All right. Any questions of staff? Does the applicant have a presentation?
No, sir.
All righty. Is there anyone from the public here that wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend a motion that we approve the special exception to allow contractor's storage yard use within the MUD Mixed Juice Downtown Zoning District, subject to the physical findings of the staff report.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. Any discussion?
No, sir.
For a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We have another quasi-judicial. This is a special exception. Has anyone, let me announce what it is first before I ask you if you talked to him about it, he would know who it was. Special exemption request to allow heavy equipment sales, rental, repair, servicing, or storage in the industrial light zoning district. The applicant is Sunbelt Natural Food Distributors, applicant SM&amp;E, Inc., Eric Roche. Has anyone had ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
All right. Then we'll move on to the staff report.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a special exception request to allow heavy equipment sales, rental, repair, servicing, or storage in the IL Light Industrial Zoning District. The property is located at 1767 Bembo Court, the southeast corner of US 441 and Bembo Court. Subject property has a future land use designation of industrial, also within the IL Light Industrial Zoning District. It's approximately 2.5 acres in size and also has an existing industrial warehouse on the property. The applicant intends to operate heavy equipment sales, rental, repair, servicing, or storage, which requires a special exception use permit within the IL zoning district. Any repair of equipment shall also be conducted within the enclosed building. They are also required to comply with all site design and other standards, including landscaping buffer to the greatest extent practicable. The applicant is proposing a buffer yard that also exceeds a 15-foot wide landscape buffer along the perimeter of the outdoor storage, mostly on the northern side, the northern boundary. Per Land Development Code, Section 2.5.1G4, a special exception is required to comply with these outlined items also in your staff report. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to approve the special exception to allow heavy equipment sales, rental, repair, servicing, or storage uses or use within the IL zoning district, subject to the exhibits and findings of the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
All right. Does anybody have any questions of staff? All right. Does the applicant have a presentation?
No presentation. Question back.
I would guess the answer to that would be no. All righty. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this matter here today? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a special, a special exception to allow heavy equipment sales, rental, repair, servicing, or storage use within the IL Light Industrial Zoning District, subject to the exhibits and findings of the staff report.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. Any further discussion? Bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're on to site plans.
... to split Parcel B2 of the Avian Point Plan Development to develop the southern portion into an apartment complex. The plat is consistent with the major development plan approved by the City Council on November 3rd, 2021, and the construction site plan was also approved by the Development Review Committee on November 3rd, 2021. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Avian Point B2 plat, subject to the major development plan, as well as the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor and the findings in the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
All right. Anybody have questions of staff? Would the applicant have a presentation? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Sure. This is Jason Mahoney with NV5. Our address is now 6200 Lee Vista, Suite 400, Orlando, Florida, 32822. It's the first time I had to say it in public. We agree with staff. I just wanted to step up and...
Did anybody have any questions of the applicant?
Can you check your mic?
Pull your microphone.
Your mic's on.
Rental?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that question.
Properties are rented?
Yes, it's a multifamily rental property.
Okay. And I just wondered, how does that work out? Do you get the people that you need and these?
I think they're, everything, all the research they've done is, yeah.
All right. Any more questions?
[laughing]
Any more questions? All right. Thanks, sir. Does anyone from the public here that wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of the Avian Point B2 plat, subject to the major development plan reviewed by the city engineer and city surveyor and the findings in staff report.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lrendo. Any further discussion? Bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Another plat for Meadowark Landing Residential Subdivision. Owner is PMDW Ventures LLC. Applicant is GL Summit Engineering, care of Jeffrey L. Summit PE.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the plat for Meadowark Landing Residential Subdivision, previously known as the Coke Property Subdivision. The subject properties are located at 2600 and 2610 Peterson Road, on the southeast corner of Peterson Road and State Road 429. The Meadowark Landing Residential Subdivision plat proposes a total of 200 single-family detached residential in a single phase. The plat is consistent with the major development plan approved by City Council on June 6th, 2021. The construction site plan was approved by the Development Review Committee on May 4th, 2022. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Meadowark Landing Residential Subdivision plat, subject to the major development plan, reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor, and the findings of the staff report. Staff is available for questions.
All right. Any questions of staff? Does the applicant have a presentation?
The applicant's not present today, sir.
Well, then I guess he doesn't. All right. Is there anyone from the public here which should speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we recommend approval of the Meadowark Landing Residential Subdivision plat, subject to the major development plan, reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor, and findings in the staff report.
Have a motion, Commissioner Lrendo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there any new business?
We got one more.
No. Stop it. I'm old like, what'd you say, Erin? I'm old, that's why. Okay, one more. The Park View Phases 1 and 2 plat approval. Owner is Cantaro Holdings LLC and Cantaro Holdings LLC Series 1. The applicant will be GL Summit Engineering, care of Jeffrey Summit PE.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the plat for Park View Preserve Phases 1 and 2. Subject properties are located at 3845 and 411 Golden Gem Road, southeast of Sadler Road, and within the Kelly Park Interchange Form Base Code area. The Park View Preserve Residential Subdivision plat proposes a total of 282 single-family detached residential units in two phases. The plat is consistent with the KPI Master Plan and Major Development Plan approved by City Council on July 1st, 2020. The construction site plan was approved by the Development Review Committee on December 16th, 2020. Shows the proposed plat for Phase 1, and actually, this one is for Phase 1, and this one is Phase 2. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Park View Preserve Phases 1 and 2 plat, subject to the major development plan, reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor, and findings of the staff report. Staff is available for questions.
All righty. Any questions of staff? All right. Is the applicant here and would they like to make a presentation?
The applicant isn't here either, sir.
There you go. All righty. Is there anyone from the public here wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to recommend approval of the Park View Preserve and B2 plat, subject to the major development code, used by the city engineer, city surveyor, and the findings of the staff report.
Thank you. Mary, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. Any discussion? Bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We ready? Okay. Now, all right, that's all of them. Okay, make sure. All right. Any, any old business?
I have some old business.
Okay.
I've got a question for Mr. Hitt.
Yeah.
Does the city of Apopka have a definition for hardship yet?
Not that I know of, other than what we've got in the Land Development Code. I don't believe...
Well, last time we talked about it, there was, the city of Apopka didn't have a definition for it.
Gotta get this guy.
No, we haven't created a definition for hardship. It's going to come down to, I mean, we would have, we would, if one is, if you're... If one is, if you're recommending that to be an amendment to the code, we'll present it to the council and see if there's direction for the code to be amended in such a way to define hardship. Usually, what's defined in variances, I mean, we can follow along what the common jurisprudence is for variances, but if it's something that we're... You'd like a recommendation to the council to direct staff to conduct such a study and then prepare an amendment, we can do so. Or you can do so.
I would like to do that. Thing would be very helpful. Next time we get variance. Because everybody up here has a different definition of hardship, and if we could just unify that definition, it'd be a lot easier for us.
Okay. We'll bring that before council.
And I don't... It's not the... I think the whole point of that is, is that, you know, again, he might have one definition. Is that really a hardship? It's an opinion thing, and it's really hard for us to do that. Now, granted, it's a judgment thing on our part, but then it has the delineation that you have to clearly show a hardship. Well, that's a really vague thing. What's a hardship? You know? And I think that's where it came in because we had situations in the past where we had... Half of us were okay with giving the exception or the variance or whatever it was, and then some of the other people here were like, "Well, I don't know what the hardship is. I don't see any specific hardship." So, again, that's... I think that's what the confusion was. Am I right? Is that kind of where it was because...
We all be on the same page.
Okay. I can look at it in the context that this is a logical thing this person's asking for. It's reasonable. There's not... His neighbors aren't here complaining about it. It's not going to have a huge effect on the neighborhood. But then, we're on the auspice of telling him no because he's not demonstrating a hardship. It's just something he wants versus a hard... So, you see what I'm saying? It's more just like a grammatical thing to say it's a hardship. What is it? Okay? To me, it's more simple... If we could simplify it, the person comes in here and is asking for something. It's not odorous to the people next door or the neighbors. It's not something wildly out of the realm of what's reasonable, then we can all use our judgment to make a decision on that and send it to the city council. But I think we had cases in the past where we had people that were going, "Yeah, that's reasonable. We do that." Then we had other people on the commission here who said, "No, there's no hardship demonstrated," which to me is really not fair to the applicant. You know, they need to have an opportunity for us to make that decision and not base it on something that's really not well-defined in our case.
Yep. Gotcha.
All that verbiage to say, "Yeah, it needs to be easier for us to figure it out."
Also, the self-imposed hardship also needs to be defined.
Yeah. Self-imposed is usually a little bit easier to... I mean, if something... That still ends up traveling with the property. If something is very hilly and they need to put a certain-sized wall in or to make it a usable piece of property, that's a hardship. I mean, but the hard part is that it does end up getting a little bit subjective in terms of what the site is or what the use actually is and what it's next to or what it's near. There's a lot of different things that end up playing in with what a variance can or can't do, and I've never been real happy with a lot of the language of a variance, you know, those eight or nine things that they have to qualify in order to get a variance because most... There's usually one or two that there's just no way they can answer affirmative to or negative, depending on how it's worded. So, yeah, I agree. We need to get some clarification so that it's... It can be site-specific, but it also depends on what is around the area, and that would give you some leniency in regards to how you could interpret the type of variance that might be being applied for. The hard part is, we can't think of everything in terms of what types of developments variance might need, and that's one of those things, the reason why we do the glitch amendments on the Land Development Code, because things change. So, we might take a shot at this and need to come back and kind of tweak it again, but the point is, you're all right. We need to make it an easier judgment call for you, for a variance, versus, you know, one person says one thing and the other person says another, and it is your viewpoint, and everybody's entitled to that. But we'd like to make that a little bit more clear for you.
I also want to caution, though, about defining hardship into a limited state because then you end up boxing yourself in a corner when it comes to taking into consideration all of the facts based to fit in what the criteria is. I mean, I can, we can come up with what is basically a guidance of what can make constitute... I would advise not to define "these are hardships" because...
It's a slippery slope.
They're always going to argue the exception to the rule. I mean, just on a quick glance, Seminole County has what they're calling, what they have under their site for application. They actually have, "What is a hardship?" And one of the guiding, I think the guiding principle that this board follows, "If some special circumstance makes it difficult for a particular project to meet the Land Development Code, a hardship may be established. A hardship generally occurs when the physical characteristics of a property are such that it cannot be used for any purpose permitted by county codes. A hardship may be created by the surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions particular to that specific property. However, the hardship cannot be self-imposed or the result of the property owner's own action."
Self-imposed, but that would be if you had a brand-new development, like the one with the height regulation down off of 429 in Clerkona. That was self-imposed.
Right.
But I think, you know, something like that, what I had mentioned is that, you know, you've got a highway right next to you, you've got vacant land adjacent, and you've got industrial property across the street. So, I think if there was a combination of where it's located, and it might be self-imposed, but on the other hand, if there's some... It's a hard thing to define.
There's the wiggle room that you, as a board, take into consideration. Usually, in all my years of practicing before local government bodies at dealing with hardships, I mean, the most common principle of hardship is, "I own a piece of land, and the way the land is designed, I can't follow the... What the code provides, the code permits for me to do on my property." So, if you've got an oddly-shaped lot that you've purchased, and that oddly-shaped lot does not allow you to meet the 10-foot side setbacks, then you can ask for a variance of seven feet because it would be legally and physically impossible for you to meet 10-foot wide setback, 10-foot side yard setbacks because your lot doesn't permit it for such. Or if your lot is carved in the middle by some water body, those are those physical characteristics that, in order for you to benefit from the code provisions for your zoning district, in which every other property in your surrounding area or under that zoning district has these rights that you have and your regulations that you're permitted to do so, however, the physical characteristics of your lot do not allow you to comply. There's nothing you can do to legally comply. I can't have 10 feet if I tried to put a 10-foot setback. I can't build on the lot. That's where you come in with the variances because you need to make adjustments to the code so that you can benefit from the same rights as, not necessarily your neighbors, but those that have those rights that fall under, those abilities that fall under a zoning category. I mean, we had issues like this in the past.
Win Dixie.
A lot, or even a lot of older lots. When you had older plats from the 20s, that they create these 25-foot-wide lots, and now zoning changes come, and now you've got, it's physically impossible to build on some of these lots. So, adjustments can be made because through no fault of your own, you now are the owner of this lot, and you need a variance in order to permit you to construct what would be normally permissible for any other person within that zoning category. I know that some boards do get very lax in pushing it all, it's kind of stretching the envelope of what a variance is, but that's your discretion and your determination to make based on the standards that are provided in the Land Development Code. So, that's why I'd be kind of remiss to move it, stretch it out. I would be fine with giving that guidance every time a variance has come up. This is what is the commonly understood hardship is, and it's usually, it is not economic. It is usually strictly related to the physical characteristics of the land that are prohibiting you from enjoying the benefits of similarly situated property owners in those zoning districts or that have the similarly situated privileges that are provided by that zoning district for their properties.
But having just those characteristics that you described from Seminole County, that in itself would help a lot of the variances that we've got coming with walls in order to build up the property for actual development.
Right. So... I mean, I could do, we could do a guidance in the code. This is what a hardship is considered without it being "these are hardships."
Yeah.
No, I understand that that's a slippery slogan, and maybe some... Because I think some of the things that we came in under that, you know, maybe should have been like, treated like a special exemption instead of a variance to the code.
Well, special exceptions are specifically enumerated in the code. These uses are... I mean, a special exception is different from a variance. I mean, that's... So, that there's... You're specified. A special exception is basically, this use is permitted, but only with a heightened level of scrutiny on the part of the governing body to make sure that you can do this as long as you meet these standards. These, usually, they're objective standards that have to be met. As opposed to a variance, which is, "I can't meet the requirements of the code, therefore I need exceptions from the code created for me in order for me to be able to use the benefit of the land to those that are similarly situated for me in those similar, in those identical zoning districts."
We'll take a look at some wording, though.
Well, I mean, again, it seems like a slippery slope, and maybe, as a board, we look at it when an applicant says that, "This is what I want to do, and I'm not allowed to do it now, and I'm asking for that." Maybe that's, we just consider that the hardship. He's not getting to use his land as he desires.
Well, right. Except the careful is, you're not allowed, the, under a variance, variances as to your use are not permitted. The use has to be what is permitted in that zoning district. However, your ability to use your property for that permitted use is hampered. It's not, it's the difficult...
Right. Not somebody using a residential...
Somebody coming in saying, "My business model dictates that I have a 75-foot-high climbing wall."
Right.
Right. But the problem is that that's... 75, the 75-foot height is not permitted in the zoning district. The proper move would be to amend your zoning category to meet that requirement, to amend to an area that would meet it, as opposed to it being a... You can't seek a variance from your use. You can't change the language in the code to allow you to have a use. You're allowed, you're changing the language of the code to permit a use that is already permitted on the site. Can't have a variance to create a new use or allow your use where one is not previously permitted. That's not the scope of a variance.
I think what you had just mentioned with the climbing wall was the instance that we went back and forth on. Curious, what did city council do with that? I didn't look.
Well, the variance doesn't go to city council.
Okay. So, that went, that's done.
If this is approved, then it's approved. Usually, the...
What was his hardship? And I'm not just picking at you. I'm just saying, okay, so...
I mean, my position would be that there's no hardship. They want to have, they want to have this height. And the code doesn't let them. Hence, my hardship is, "The code doesn't let me do what I want to do."
What I want, right. I bought a piece of property, and the code won't let me do it.
Correct. That's a use variance, which is not permitted under the code, as opposed to there being a variance to allow a permitted use. The variance allows, makes adjustments to the code to allow, to go forth a permitted use, not to create an exception to the code to allow a use that isn't previously permitted.
And one of the options that we had with that one is to rezone the property to mixed use, which would have allowed it up to 75 feet.
Or even creating a PD, creating a planned development, which would have, then the development agreement under the planned development would dictate, however, the building heights or whatever heights you want to create as such.
We're going to dig a 25-foot hole and put the building in it. And it'd be good.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
So, this is going to go in front of the city council, I assume?
Say again?
You're going to bring this up in front of the city council?
Well, if we have to amend the code, that has to go to city council. Now, however, if it's, if I'm providing a hardship and then, I mean, I can always, based on every application, because it really is fluid, and it's based on, it's really on a case-by-case basis. For each variance application, we can simply have a caveat as we present to remind and advise this board, "A hardship shall..." Hardships have been considered to be this, and I can always enumerate those, and now you're proceeding forward as your guidance to make your decision that this is what the hardship is. It really is going to be, I think the easiest thing to remember is a hardship is really tied to the physical characteristics of the land, and that's it.
No, I understand all that. I'd just like to have some input from the city council on this.
Well, I think...
I could present it to see if it's something that the city council wants to undertake amending the code to include, to further clarify hardship in the, within the...
Would it be appropriate for one of us to email the city council and ask them to look into it? Is that...
We could.
You could.
One of the options that I'm looking at is, you know, I've already, I already do glitch amendments about, you know, a couple of times a year, is I could, we know there's a problem, and this is one of those things, that's a glitch amendment to me, is that we could draft some language up, and we do meet with city council members, usually the, you know, the week of city council meetings, and that's one of those things we could present to each of the members and just say, "This is what we're looking at to clarify some issues that we had with the variance conditions. What do you think?" And they'll probably say, "Okay," and then I'll just process it as a glitch amendment.
Right. We can work it up that this came up, this came up from discussions in the Planning Commission as an issue.
I appreciate, I would appreciate that. I would like to have their input on this.
We can do that.
So, on you now, Jim.
Okay. I think having that language...
Any new business? Mary? I'm sorry, Linda.
What? When did that happen?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Please, Sir Orlando, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I noticed as I was going through the packet that the, all the school reports on, you know, the guesstimates, as it were, they're all out of date, the numbers are wrong, and OCPS should be our partner, and how can we make an intelligent decision and based on, you know, how many people you're going to try to put in here in this school? And I know that there's, I think I remember anyway, that there is a person from OCPS that either is attached to Planning Commission or City Council, and I'm wondering if they could update things or give us an idea. I mean, there was, there was something that was in there that was over a year old, and I think there was one that was current, but the rest of them were old, and it'd be just helpful to have more updated information. That's all I'm asking for.
They're over a year old, and they can't update it because they can't, OCPS can't run these numbers again in their software because if they do, there will be failures if they aren't already failed schools on all of them. Like, in terms of concurrency, it messes it up. So, those numbers are when they're formulated, when they submit their concurrency application with OCPS, and then they give us a copy of it. Now, because we don't exactly have scheduling, like applicants wait to plat subdivisions, and they have the discretion to do that, you kind of see it later, such as Parkview was probably the oldest one there, and they waited to, it delayed the platting process just because their construction site plan was already approved and things like that. So, if they do it with a more updated numbers with OCPS, theoretically, all the units within this area, and this is what I've been told, it's my understanding from OCPS, that if they rerun anything at all with updated dates, then everything would fail. Because just in a Popka within city limits, you know, obviously, we're developing a lot here. Week by week, it changes, and I've literally seen it myself. We're going through kind of an issue with one of our projects now. They're amending something before they pass concurrency, and now they have to have a concurrency agreement with OCPS, which delays like platting and things like that.
So, theoretically, we should just ignore it all?
Theoretically, the concurrency has been approved by OCPS or rather issued.
That's what I mean. The report is significant because it's been approved.
The passing numbers are already, they're already put in the network, so those are hard numbers.
Capacity they've done, which is their first step, concurrency they've done with platting. We don't allow them to have any kind of construction site plan approval that DRC approves or plat before they can get OCPS concurrency, which is concurrency is the real-time numbers, what's actually available at that time, not just what's assumed.
That's also when they start paying.
Well, and then, and then it's very possible that people are going to be moving, and our populations are going to grow greatly, so...
Yeah. We're expecting within the next, right now, according to our development table and our map that we've got, we're expecting in the next three to five years, another 5,000 units. I mean, where, and at 2.6 or 2.7 persons per household, you know, we're looking like 12,000, 13,000 more people in the next three to five years.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's scary. It's scary.
And I'd say that's on the low end.
Yeah. Very could, very well could be. But we're also getting some jobs. You know, we're getting the industrial warehousing and some more commercial coming in too, so but, but it's, we're no longer sleepy little Apokka, you know, from 30 years ago. It's, we're big.
Well, thank you, thank you, Ms. Sanchez, for the education.
Yeah. One of the things that Ms. Lrendo and I were talking about earlier, I am going to talk to somebody over at OCPS and see if we can get somebody to come in to kind of give us, give you all a kind of an overview on the school capacity and school concurrency issues and how they, you know, some, just some of the background of what they, what they're working on with schools and how we get to get past the failed stage, I guess you could say, for each of the schools. Now, he's going to be just, he or she's going to be just a messenger, so just give you a heads up.
All righty. Any more new business?
Oh, did Christian? This is Christian Togmas. He's our, one of our new planner ones that started a couple of weeks ago, so we got, we got two more to replace, but Jean's been holding it together and...
He was proactive. He come and introduced ourselves to all of us.
Oh, well, never mind that. Well, no, I took it back. I still got the introduction.
All right. Anything else?
Me, this is John.
Thank you.